I want to welcome you tonight. And this is a hearing that is required by the Commonwealth of Mass, where the chief executive of the community will conduct a public hearing and take questions and comments as it relates to the IQ project. So in the Commonwealth of Mass, they've developed a program called IQ. This has been a proven economic development tool, which uses state tax revenues to help build public infrastructure in areas that will generate economic and community benefits. As you all know, the North Point area is an area that the city has been looking at along with developers for many, many years, trying to really do things that will encourage development to occur. The North Point proposal is a joint effort amongst EF First, the North Point Development Team, and the City of Cambridge and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. With the IQ process, it will allow EF's state income tax revenues to be allocated to a $25 million bond issue that will pay for certain infrastructure. And we will go into some detail as to what that infrastructure will be and how we believe that infrastructure will benefit not only the North Point area, but the entire community. The infrastructure improvements will allow us to reconnect North Point and East Cambridge. There is a disconnect really based on the traffic, the highway situation, the way the streets are laid out. We've seen many improvements in the use of IQ to help improve that area. So the areas, current and future residents, students, and employees will all be benefiting by jumpstarting the development of the neighborhood. When EF made a decision to remain in Massachusetts and retain many jobs that Shawna will talk about in Massachusetts, commit to two buildings and even thinking about a third building, it was their belief that these improvements would take place, which would really benefit the employees and the people who come to the buildings. So we're really trying to work on that to make good on that promise that the city and the Commonwealth shared with EF. But per the IQ statute, as I mentioned, the municipality shall conduct a public hearing to allow for local input on this economic development proposal. People certainly are welcome to comment on the use of the tool and how it's going to work in Cambridge. Since early 2013, this administration has worked very closely with the IQ program and the developers to make sure that we understand its value and any risks to the city. So we're joined at the table by the city's financial team and outside consultants, both legal and financial, who have looked at it and assessed the risk and have really worked with the city to make sure we clearly understand what that means on behalf of the residents. But we believe that after a lengthy review and analysis by city departments, that the North Point IQ will allow Cambridge to receive state funding for key infrastructure improvements, as well as serve as the necessary catalyst to jumpstart this economic development that we talked about. For us, this is really the second time that a state administration has looked at IQ. We ran to the very end of the Patrick administration and we received very favorable comments. We had actually initiated talks with the Cambridge City Council about moving forward with IQ. As the Patrick administration ended and the Baker administration took over, they wanted to again take a look at the whole process. So the development team in the city and the consultants have patiently worked with the new administration, which brings us to the same point. We believe that this will be successful and this will benefit the entire East Cambridge, North Point area, and also, you know, many citizens in our city. So as you can see from this slide, this has been reviewed and worked on by all different members of the various departments. The city solicitor and her staff, along with some outside council, have made several reviews. The city's finance department and the assessor, Robert Rindt, along with their outside consultants, Susan Kendall and Cindy McNerney from First Southwest, have reviewed the financials. We prepared to discuss those. Our outside counsel, Walter St. Orange from Lockwood L.L.D., has taken a look at all the bonding requirements and making sure that we conform and meet all the legal requirements, helping us to evaluate again the risk of the financing. And Kevin Batt from Anderson Krieger have taken a look at our agreements around the infrastructure and some environmental issues also. Our community development staff will be represented by Suzanne Rasmussen. She can go over some of the planning history and some of the benefits that we know the community will receive from this. And just to mention that our purchasing department has met all the legal requirements for advertising to make this process complete. So with that, I will turn this over to Shawna Sullivan, who will take you through the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. My name is Shawna Sullivan. I work with EF Education First. And I'm here with my counterpart from Divco West, Mark Johnson. Together, we're going to talk a bit about the North Point area, its history, the transformation that's taken place over the past 20, 30 years, and then how the IQ program works. As some of you may know, EF is a global education company. We have offices in schools in 53 countries around the world. Our mission is to open the world for education. We have about 1,000 employees in Cambridge, 1,000 international business students here. And we've been at North Point now since 1996. So the area we're talking about, just to give everyone some context, is the area that extends from the Lower Charles River Basin through North Point Park, the EF campus, down by the Leachmere train station and over to the border with Somerville. This area for many years was known as the lost half-mile. And that was because after the original Charles River Dam was developed to help with flood control, this and the benefit, of course, was the Green Line now extended to Leachmere, it also cut off North Point from the rest of East Cambridge. Then what happened to make matters worse is we put, the state put a new dam here that cut us off from the harbor. And after many years in the, you know, 18, 1900s of robust shipping and manufacturing, it then turned into a desolate sort of warehouse and industrial area with little to no development. In 1996, EF took a chance at the North Point site and we broke ground on a 250,000 square foot building to relocate from a small office at One Memorial Drive. At the time, there was nothing out here. It was warehouses, trash transfer distillery building, very, very little other development. And we waited for a long time for the promises that the state had made around North Point Park, additional development. We waited for a neighborhood to form. Slowly but surely, it started to over the next few years. And in 2011, we made the decision to stay here in Cambridge and expand our North American presence here over at North Point with two education circles. Many of you might be familiar with our new building along the Charles River. And since that time, believe it or not, no other company has located at North Point. It's easy to think that the area over by EF is, you know, beautiful and well-developed thanks to the public-private partnerships that have been successful. But it's also apparent that the rest of the North Point development has not come to life. Now, I've walked to work for a long time. My colleagues and the students over at Health International Business School, many of us either walk or take the tea or bike to and from EF. And the pathways we have to take to get to Parks of Cambridge or Somerville or to the Green Line involve a pretty dark, desolate, not-so-pleasant walk through this area that for a long time, you know, sat even more dormant than it is today. What we would love more than anything is for this area to become the neighborhood that it was promised that it would be. And we think that the IQ program will help us get there. So just to quickly go through some key milestones, a quick timeline. As the city manager said, we've been working on this project for almost three and a half years now. Back when EF made the decision to stay in the Commonwealth, administration finance suggested to us that we work on the IQ program as a way to bring better infrastructure to the area. And we joined forces with the developers of the North Point project and started putting together a proposal for the Commonwealth that would take EF's state income tax revenues generated through our headquarters development and apply it towards this $25 million bond that would help offset the costs of some of the critical infrastructure. In spring 2013, we formed this city working group. We've been really working very closely with this team for several years now to fine-tune the proposal and make sure that we have all our i's dotted and t's crossed. In spring 2014, we presented to the East Cambridge planning team, received their positive endorsement to move forward. We then received unanimous approval from the city council to formally submit our application to the Commonwealth. We then started working with the Baker, with the Patrick administration and received preliminary approval from the Patrick administration in early 2015. At that point, we were sort of forwarded along to the Baker administration and as well as the Divco West team came on board and acquired the North Point project. So at that point, we resubmitted a slightly updated proposal just to reflect the new development team and sort of the priority of infrastructure to the Baker administration. They did an extensive review and we obtained preliminary approval from the Baker administration in May, including a certificate from the Department of Revenue and the Mass Development Finance Agency. We went back to the East Cambridge planning team last week. Again, a very positive discussion. And today, we're here fulfilling the obligation of the statute with a public hearing. If things move forward the way we'd like, we'll be in front of city council as early as next week. And then if we have an approval from city council to go forward with our final development proposal, we expect and anticipate the Commonwealth's final approval this summer with the bonds being issued this fall. So it's been, it's been a long road, but, you know, a lot of, a lot of people have had their hands in this and I think it's only made the proposal better. The other benefit of the delay really is we now have real tangible jobs and tax revenue that is able to be applied towards the bond. So we're not talking about projected income tax revenue. We're talking about real revenue that is here today, that's not going anywhere, that is a secure and a helpful way to get things moving in the right direction. So just quickly, for folks at home in particular, how does this program work? It's, it's very complicated. And we just wanted to break it down in some simple terms. So the way this works is the tax revenue that is generated, the state income tax revenue generated from the jobs at EF Education First in our, at our campus at North Point, is allocated by the Commonwealth to Mass Development to fund a $25 million bond. And that bond then comes back to the North Point development team to be used to offset the cost of infrastructure. We then use that money to build the infrastructure, which in turn helps generate economic activity locally, property taxes for the City of Cambridge, and fulfills the development plan at North Point. I just want to say at no point are local property taxes applied to the IQ bond. It's all state income and sales tax revenue. The finance team will talk in a few minutes about the City of Cambridge's role if there's a rare and unlikely event of a revenue shortfall. Again, as I said earlier, because we're starting with, you know, these jobs that are real and retained, we have a $6.3 million surplus on day one, which takes a significant burden off that $25 million figure. And we have jobs that are counted and real projections that we know over the next few years will allow us to well exceed the requirements of the debt service payments. So this is just a quick look to give you a sense of sort of what the reality is from the last 20 years. You know, we've seen this area transform and there's been a few success stories, but there's still a lot of work to be done. And so we, we hope, you know, on behalf of the EF team, that this is an opportunity for all of us to take advantage of this creative state program that will give Cambridge a bit of, some of the investment we've made in Cambridge back for this infrastructure. So at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Mark Johnson from Divco West, who's going to get into more of the details about the infrastructure improvements.
So again, my name is Mark Johnson. I'm director of development at Divco West. Before Divco West acquired North Point in August 2015, the H Y M Investment Group, Anthony Caluccio, and the rest of our team worked long and hard with the community to work on improving the physical relationship between North Point and East Cambridge. And since coming on board, Divco West has affirmed those goals and is revising our master plan to improve upon those connections. As recently as last week, Shawna and I and others met with the E C P T to go over our plan for building new roads and infrastructure that are going to connect East Cambridge to North Point. At full buildout, the North Point site will offer many advantages to East Cambridge. There's going to be a public market on the East Cambridge side of Monsignor O'Brien Highway, as well as new retail, new open space. Monsignor O'Brien Highway will actually be transformed from a highway today that divides North Point from East Cambridge into a tree-lined boulevard with safer connections, pedestrian walkways, new cycle tracks for bicycles. We have a first slide here showing the existing, and again, this is North Point, the rally yards to the north, the Gilmore Bridge, and Monsignor O'Brien Highway here. There are just a few points of entry into North Point and really not much connection, as Shawna mentioned, between the east and west portions of North Point. With the construction of new roadways, we actually hope to transform this now to a neighborhood that feels like an extension of East Cambridge. You can see here the arrows, First Street, connecting up to First Street in North Point, Second Street coming up and connecting to Water Street, and again, North Point Boulevard connecting all the way through east to west, Dawes Street connecting east to west. We think those roadway connections are going to be what commercial tenants really need in order for the site to be prepared to receive developments. And they're going to be an important step towards connecting, what Shawna described as a rather desolate place, into the fabric of East Cambridge. I'll go into a little bit more detail on the, on the infrastructure and happy to take questions too on this. One of the important infrastructure projects that we'll be undertaking is not a very glamorous one, but it's a sewer capacity improvement project. Noted here, we'll be accommodating 700,000 gallons per day of new sewage that has to be connected to a network. And that's a huge undertaking and again, another prerequisite before any development can take place in this part of Cambridge. The second is onsite road and utility networks. And these include the road and utility networks to the east that EF has already undertaken. And in orange, the road and utility networks that we'll be undertaking actually are already in design and we hope to break ground with next year. A third piece is the, noted in purple here, the Monsignor O'Brien Highway. Again, the goal here is to transform this from a highway that divides North Point from East Cambridge into a tree-lined boulevard with new pedestrian connections, wide crosswalks, cycle tracks for bicycle accommodation. It will really transform the character and make connections from North Point to East Cambridge. This is just an illustrative slide showing before and after. And we're looking up First Street in each case towards North Point. And you see how the road connection here makes a really dramatic difference of connecting North Point to East Cambridge. Again, this is a summary of the economics. I'm happy to go into more detail. But just to let everyone know that the total cost of the infrastructure is well over $75 million. IQ will provide $25 million to help initiate the, the infrastructure. Obviously, there's a very steep price and IQ revenues play an important part of that. But IQ doesn't fund all of the infrastructure required to make North Point a reality.
You just heard a lot of good information about how this project benefits the North Point district in and of itself and helps realize the economic development potential and also expansion in both market and affordable housing supply with, as a result of these investments. But I wanted to just briefly talk about significant benefits that accrue that go much broader than the district itself and into the eastern half of Cambridge and frankly, regionally in terms of improving mobility to sustainable mode. So the internal roadway network that was just described emphasizes walking and biking as well as transit use. And the project has in fact already dramatically reduced the distance between, the distance to community college and created a very convenient link to the orange line. So suddenly, you're, you are within reach of the whole transit shed that the orange line provides. And the link in the middle of the project, which is the multi-use path that goes along the park that dominates the central part of the project, connects to pathway systems on both sides of the Charles River. And those systems have become very, very extensive and reach far into many other communities, as well as in the future to the Somerville Community Path, which in turn connects to the Minuteman that reaches as far away as Bedford, 15 miles away from this area. Is, is now, by creating this link, you are now inside this huge bike and pedestrian network linking throughout the region. Of course, the new Leachmere Station is accommodated and that's a critical link to, that will allow the extension of the Green Line into Somerville and to Matford, initially to Tufts and hopefully eventually up to Route 16. And that really facilitates the conversion of automobile trips to the site both for commuting and for all other trip services. Of course, other trips are, people take more trips that are not for work than they do for work. So it's a very significant improvement. And it does, it's not only to and from the site, but it's also connecting people with the Greater Kendall Square area, downtown Boston, and all other destinations along the Green Line. So it's a very, very significant improvement that will allow the site to develop without the kind of vehicle trips you would otherwise see. As was described, the construction of O'Brien Highway will provide three new safe pedestrian crossings that again connects East Cambridge, Kendall Square, and North Point and of course, connects Kendall Square and East Cambridge also to the new extended Green Line. And the reconstruction of O'Brien Highway will dramatically improve bicycle accessibility in the area. As I think you all know, O'Brien Highway is not a comfortable bicycle facility today for, well, with the exception of the most aggressive cyclists, I would say. It's, the vast majority of people would not ride on O'Brien Highway. And it will be a, a very dramatic change in cycling accessibility. And finally, the extension of the First Street, or First Street through to O'Brien Highway and across to the site, that is something that was been envisioned for over a decade as part of East Cambridge's planning, that by extending that roadway, you have the opportunity to shift some of the trips that come in and out of Kendall Square away from Third Street and onto First Street and divide the burden of the additional vehicle trips that have been caused by development away from Third Street, which is a more residential street. So that extension alone is, of this street segment is something that will have a very big impact on the experience of living on Third Street and the ability to accommodate the growth in the Kendall Square area. So those are some of the infrastructure benefits that are expected that have benefits way beyond the district itself, but will really improve conditions regionally.
Now, we're going to begin to talk to you about our financial analysis and how the financial program works. And I want to say that we have really given this a thorough review to make sure that we are really interpreting the requirements of IQ and doing an appropriate assessment of the financial risk for the community. In doing that, we have gone beyond our normal review, which is novel, normally very thorough. I think as evidenced by our history and finances with all the rating agencies. But to enhance our review, not only our own city solicitor, but outside counsel who's been looking at this closely for us, helping us assess the risk and making sure we're thoroughly understanding the IQ requirements. We also have Susan Kendall from First Southwest. Susan has a long history as a municipal treasurer. She worked for Moody's Investor Services and has been consulting with the city on some different financial programs that we are looking at. We have Robert Rindt, who's our principal assessor. And I will now turn it over to Louis Stevensqually, who's the assistant city manager for finance, and he will take you through our financial risk assessment.
Thank you, Rich. So I mean, what we tried to do here from our point of view is to see what risks we felt the taxpayers were at by us moving into this. And when it comes to taxpayers' risk, I think it's safe to say that I've been pretty conservative. And I really believe that the state and IQ's regulations were set up to provide good oversight and protection for the whole city. And I think the presentation today will illustrate that. Also, after Bob Rindt speaks, as Rich said, we'll hear from Susan Kendall, the First Southwest financial consultant, who will confirm our analysis. So we've really put a lot of time in taking a look at this. So the first slide just talks about the $25 million. I think it's important to realize these are bonds through the state of Massachusetts. These are not city bonds. As you know, we have a lot of bonds ourselves over the next five years. So that was one of the things we wanted to make clear that these were not our bonds. And the real question was going to be, if there is any issues with these bonds, how would we pay it back? And the way it works is if there is a shortfall, we'll be responsible for paying it back through state aid. But I think when we get to the next two charts especially, you will see that we really believe that's a real, real long shot. When you take a look at the EF and North Point tax revenues that are projected to be more insufficient to cover the debt service for at least the life of the bond, then shortfalls are incredibly unlikely. And I think if you go to the next chart, what we really want to bring home here is that we have till 2047 to pay off the 30-year bond. And we believe by 2023, this bond will be paid off. So that's incredibly important to us. One of the reasons that has really been helpful to do that is that the state determined that North Point revenues generated after the May of 2014 were eligible to be allocated toward this process. And that allows us to start with the $6.3 million, which is a real important factor and really gave us a, a good feeling that we were, you know, going to be in real good shape. So I think if you take a look at this chart, the fact that we were really projecting 2023 to be paid off is something that people can be comfortable with. But I think the next chart is also pretty amazing because we really feel that not only will we be paid off in 2023, but we may have put the worst-case assumptions in here. I mean, we really, when we look at the revenue that the state projected, we think we can beat that. And when we look at the interest rates that they're projecting now, we think we will end up better. So all the indications we have show that with the additional surplus we have, we don't see really any taxpayer risk. We think this will pay, be paid off well in advance. And it looks like a real win for the city, the project, and the taxpayers.
Other protections that are built into the municipal liquidity, as one is the municipal liquidity reserve. Basically, IQ requires that you have at least two years of built-in reserves that the municipality will have access to. the municipality will have access to in case there isn't any revenue shortfall. So as you've already seen, we already have $6.3 million that the state has certified. We will have another two years built into a municipal liquidity reserve. So if some reason we saw that there was a downturn, we would have ample time to make an assessment of what needs to be done and we'd have plenty of reserve time to do that. This is all funded privately by the, in this case, the North Point developers. This money is put aside. It provides sufficient funds, again, for the two years. And it would allow us then to go to the next step if we saw it was a prolonged problem, which would allow us basically to start to assess taxes, a levy of money on the unimproved parcels at North Point. Basically, we'd be leaving them, all the money that was due to the city. So you'd have your liquidity reserve would have to be exhausted after we get through that, then we would have the assessment plan in place so that we would be able to do it. Worst-case scenario would be that the city would wind up taking a piece of property if, if it was the absolute end of the road and if the assessments weren't paid. The $25 million basically would be that we, we'd have to have at least $15 million in value of the property. The property is about four to five times that in its undeveloped state at this time. So there's plenty of value there. It will also allow, as the property is developed, while the city to release certain parcels so it's not going to inhibit the development of North Point as we go forward. And again, we're also going to be collecting additional tax revenue from that, which benefits the city because this development is moving forward. So there's, as we said, this, we've got, you know, a good source of revenue coming in, which we feel is conservative, the state has already certified. We have a municipal liquidity reserve that would give us two years of protection. And then we have the final step, we would be able to assess each parcel and leave the parcel for any unpaid estimate of taxes going forward, any of the unpaid GoOn to revenues and expenses. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Susan Kendall, who was with the First Southwest. Again, Luke and I worked very closely with the city, the problems, we looked at it and made sure we were, did everything properly within the statute as it was known to us with legal counsel. And then for a second check, we asked First Southwest to go over the assumptions that we were making and the state was making to see that we were in fact on the right track.
Just to review the mechanics a little bit, it's state income tax and sales tax revenue that gets allocated to pay debt service on the bonds. It's just a regular payment on the bonds of principal and interest. Those revenues would otherwise be going into the state's coffers and, and this was a, a program set up to encourage infrastructure development. The city does, if, if everything works the way we, we fully expected to, the city really is not involved. And in fact, the city will not be responsible for anything after enough revenues have accumulated to satisfy whatever outstanding principal and interest are left. The state does a certification process every year to, to keep track of that. And the city, of course, will be notified of that. But the mechanics are fairly straightforward. I did want to reiterate, Bob and Louie have done a great job of, of explaining exactly how, how the city is involved, but there are multiple layers of protection and we agree with that, all, all of the iQub program is set up that way to protect those cities because really it's supposed to be a program that benefits all the parties involved. As Mr. Rossi said, it's very important for the city to be aware of any impact on its AAA ratings, bond ratings. So far with the six financings that have occurred in other cities, there have been no rating changes. But we, we went another level, a little bit deeper and, and looked at, at how much the city's already paying in debt service every year. The additional amount should the city have to make up a shortfall is very small, which is the way the rating agencies would look at it. They would treat it as if it were Cambridge's obligation. And the amount of the, of the $25 million of this bond issue is very small compared to the amount of debt that's outstanding with the city already. And if you take, if you take a look at the next slide, these are the outstanding iQub financings that happen, have already occurred in the Commonwealth. Three are right next door in Boston, one even closer in Somerville, and then some other smaller projects in, in the suburbs. We have worked on several of these financings with our, our other cities who are clients and we feel very comfortable that the city's not taking on any, any extraordinary risk and that they're well protected.
As a community, as a city manager, I believe we do have an obligation to assist development teams to have these plans come to fruition. Many, many residents and citizens have spent hours and hours and years working on what the North Point development can be for the entire community. And, you know, I, I can't see a city just sitting back and doing nothing. This is a low-risk opportunity for the city to step up and assist the development community to help the residents realize the dreams that they have for North Point and to create so many economic advantages and environmental advantages for the community and to really promote a really new neighborhood. I mean, this is something that we really haven't focused on a lot tonight, but this will in fact have retail, housing, jobs. It will have interesting places to go, great open space, and it'll connect right up with East Cambridge. If you can only envision how bad that First Street connection is, how dangerous it is, how just, you know, you can't fathom where you're going and what you're doing when you get to that area. This will clear all that up and really make that end of the city work in a much better fashion. So we will attract future tenants to the North Point area. We'll be able to realize retail and housing opportunities and in excess of 200 units, 250 units of affordable housing, which is a real need and goal for the city. So if we can really stick with the Commonwealth and help make the promise that was made to EF several years ago come true and assist the development team in North Point, I believe that's an obligation that the city owes to the developers and to the community. I'm pleased to be part of it. I think this is a great plan, great plan for the city to be involved in. I want to say thank you to the entire team that has worked, you know, week after week for many years. And with that, I thank everybody and thank you for your indulgence and patience. Thank you.